Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the March 19 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask if you are able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the rest is our.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Axted.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Sonart.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Cassena.
Here.
Councilmember Dohfitt.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Student Representative Tanner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to approval of the agenda and consent agenda, I'd like to draw your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the pack at action item C1. Add to item C1, Schedule Public Comment, 100% Communities in the 907 Navigation App. Abby Struffer, South Central Consulting, requested by the city clerk. Action add to item H6, Action Approval Reporting Requirements for Agencies Receiving Grants Through Legislative Budget. Legislative Budget Summary, requested by Vice Mayor Axted. And action add to H.9, Action Approval Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Letter of Support for the American Title Energy Project Led by ORPC with a Memo and a Letter of Support. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the agenda with add items C1, H6, H9, and the consent agenda and requesting unanimous consent.
One second.
Is there any proposed amendments to the agenda or consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the Regular Meeting Minutes of March 5, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. Action Approval Bills to be Ratified, brought to you by the administration. Action Approval Authorizing a Memorandum of Agreement with Greatland Consulting Training and Training LLC for Use of the Alaska Regional Fire Training Center, brought to you by the administration. Action Approval Authorizing a Special Use Permit to Jeremy Mastrey, DBA River Rock Outdoors LLC for Commercial Operations at Kenai Municipal Airport Float Plane Basin, brought to you by the administration. Action Approval Authorizing a Special Use Permit to Jeremy Mastrey, DBA River Rock Outdoor LLC for Fuel Tank Storage at Kenai Municipal Airport Float Plane Basin, brought to you by the administration. And Action Approval Approving Amendments to the Lease and Concession Agreement for the Kenai Municipal Golf Course and Recreation Area between the City of Kenai and KNC Golf, Inc., brought to you by the administration. And that is your consent agenda.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that's on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record? Oh, Chicago.
Does that work?
No.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, on the, just below the...
Well, that guy. Oh, that works.
Yeah, if you could just give your name and say you reside for the record.
Yeah, I'm William Coghill. Most know it as Bill Coghill, but State of Alaska in Saldana. But I'm here because to talk about the Kenai Golf Course. I'm part of the new ownership group. My wife and I, along with Mike Navarre, who you might know, along with Dr. Bill Kim, are the owners of KNC Golf, Inc. And we managed to reach an agreement with Griffin Golf, Mark and Laura, to take over their assets, to buy their assets from them, and continue the lease with the city of Kenai. We are so thankful to Mark and Laura because they've been very helpful in this transition process. And we're kind of like kids with the keys to the toy shop in so many ways because all of us are very avid golfers. Been helping with the Kenai Golf Course and the Golf Association as their handicap chairman since it opened in about 1987, I believe. The golfers that are familiar with the course are going to see a lot of familiar faces there. Craig and Connie Young will be there, as usual, commanding the clubhouse most of the time. Also, even Laura's going to be working there, which is really nice. And of course, Bill Enberg is our greenskeeper and the one responsible for the nicest greens in the state of Alaska, at least the southern part of the state of Alaska, according to the Alaska Golf Association last summer when they rerated the course. We also have Willie Perkins, he's one of the mechanics, and Neil Baldwin, who works on the carts, is all returning, as well as many members of Bill Enberg's turf staff. Some of those young members graduate out and get off to college and aren't returning, but some of the key ones are, along with many volunteers. We are basically committed to a quality golf experience for all golfers. We're opening with a remodeled clubhouse, a new modern point-of-sale and tee system. We're also bringing up a 28-year-old PGA golf pro named Spencer Farrell from Palm Springs. We believe Spencer will be able to allow us to have more junior golf and ladies clinics. They are very popular, but they've always been restricted in the past because they take a lot of Bill Enberg's time, for example, which he doesn't have much of, keeping the greens the way they are. So we think this will be really nice. And plus, he's got excellent social media skills, which us older people on the owners don't have much experience of that at all. So we think these things are going to be attributes to the course this summer. We endeavor to make the Kenai Golf Course a destination for travelers to the peninsula, as well as the group of local golfers that we have. We want to, one of our goals is to bring one or more of the Alaska Championship Golf Tournaments run by the Alaska Golf Association to Kenai. This year, they're already scheduled. They schedule them well in advance, but we're targeting next year for at least one of them. That's going to help bring the Kenai Golf Course more known to the Alaskan travelers that come down here. And we have lots of them that come from Anchorage, as we all know, in Palmer and even Fairbanks. Not only does the golf course want to be fun and competitive, but it must also be sustainable, well into the future, well beyond even the 31 years left on the lease that we have right now. So to do that, we need to expand some of our markets, both local and non-Alaska residents, which is why we're requesting a non-resident fee for the first time. We had a lot of comments from golfers who come that are, come here to fish. They limit out on reds because this fish is so good, excuse me, early in the morning. And it's like, they come to the golf course and they can't believe that they can play golf here for like $45. I mean, these people are used to paying two $400 for a round of golf. And in Alaska, they want to go home with something that shows they golfed in Alaska. They want to come home with a nice shirt with the Kenai logo either on the front or the arm of the shirt. And that's what we are going to provide this year. More stuff in the pro shop, more marketing to lodges and other places where these people, the people don't come to Alaska to play golf. They come to Alaska to fish. But while they're here, this experience that we hope to be able to provide and has been provided in the past, just hasn't been marketed as well. We want to enhance that market, as well as having the clubhouse be a little more of a social place to go. It's been a little bit rough, maybe lately. They're putting texturing on the sheet rock today. By May 1, we should open with a new, open, more open clubhouse. So we hope you all will be able to come by and at least visit it if you're not already a golfer. One of the things in the golfing industry right now is dynamic pricing. It's what hotels and airlines have been using for years. With this new system, and it'll be online, we can change rates and bring sales as we feel that that's necessary. In other words, anytime like on a Tuesday and Wednesday, when we're not getting much play, there's nothing that's going to help us more than discounting those rates on that day and getting players out there on the golf course. We'll make money, we'll get some revenue where we worked before. So that's one of the reasons that we're requesting these higher rates because what we've got in our proposal is the highest rate that you're allowing us to charge for 18 holes for a non-resident and a resident. We hope that that doesn't have to be changed next year. It was two years ago, the last time rates were changed here. They are going to go up. They need to, to provide the type of golf course that we believe people want to see and we're committed to providing. But we look forward to working closely with the city, not only for the outdoor recreation opportunities provided in the summer by the golf course, but also in support of the winter activities that normally provides many cross-country skiers lots and lots of hours of enjoyable skiing. That happened twice for me this year. I normally golf 90 to 100 times at the Kenai Golf Course. Ski, I didn't say, I said golf, but I meant ski. I'm there more in the winter than in the summer normally. Maybe not this coming year, but I only was able to ski there in October twice. So that's extremely unusual. We hope that that, the recreational opportunities are better for both outdoor and stuff, too. So we look forward to working with the city. We're very close to the city. We have lots of good contacts in the city, and people have helped us and encouraged us. So we look forward to being involved with the city council many more times here in the future. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Coghill? Oh, go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, what kind of construction projects, obviously you're working on things right now inside and all that, but do you have projects for this summer, next summer, that you're planning on doing?
We don't have that mapped out yet, but one of the meetings I had with the city manager and several of the administration members, we want to go into some kind of a long-term planning, like three years, five years, 10 years, because we have assets that we use jointly all the time. We're repairing the worst bridge right now. There's one foot bridge that you'd fall through if you tried to walk through it. And it was blocked off at the end of last year because it needed help so bad. But we've got that process planned and we'll be starting that in the next couple of days. It would have already been started if this latest snowfall hadn't hit. But, and that's, and these bridges and stuff, many of them are used by the skiers as well. So these bridges that we're going to be fixing and repairing, all of the bridges across the creek, except for the really big one, oh, number 10, need work or replacement. The one on hole number one, which is a cart, a cart path bridge, not a walking bridge, it'll survive this year, but it needs to be replaced probably in the fall. But the other ones need to be just refinished on top. The wood on top needs to be the support structures, the steel beams or whatever support we do have under those are fine. But we have, one of our volunteers, Steve Hunrood, is a guy who's worked on those before and has the construction experience to advise us. And then we have the employees to do it. So that's one of them. But the parking lot, for example, great example. It'd be really nice to have a paved parking lot. Most golf courses do have a paved parking lot. That's used by us and it's used in the winter. It would reduce dust, reduce the amount of grading that the city has to do to maintain it and the dust control issues. So those are the kind of projects that I hope to work with the city to somehow come out with the most economical way to do that, to get that job done, along with other things. So we'll be working on those long-term, but we only have, right now, it's of course, the golf, the clubhouse remodel and the bridge. And then we have a couple of drainage issues on the back that will be of high priority as well right now. And some tee boxes that need to be built. We've moved some tee boxes to places where the markers are just on the fairway. There's no traditional built-up tee box with nice flat grass on the top. Golfers love that, and that's one of the things that are also on our short-term construction list, so.
Thank you for that. Mr. Coghill, did you, did I hear May 1, or is that what you're shooting for, for opening?
Yeah, and I bet there'll be golfers out there. In fact, I'm not sure there wasn't golfers out there when the grass was open. But we're, Bill Enberg, our greenskeeper, you might know as well, he's going to arrive April 25. And we need to have this bridge done before that because he's going to want all hands on deck, getting the greens ready for the season as quick as possible. So that's where we're at.
Okay, yeah, very good. And I got a couple of granddaughters that are going to be looking forward to being back out there again under the junior golf program, so, which is a great program.
I heard from Bill that there are a couple of the top junior women lady golfers around, so.
Yeah, they're doing very good.
Yeah. Bill, of course, a big supporter of junior golf, and we are too, and we're just going to be able to do more with Spencer being there. And he's, he was recommended by Bill Enberg. He's a pro at Traditions Golf Course in Palm Springs. And he's young, and we've interviewed with him. He sounds really a likable guy. Not only is he coming up, but apparently his relationship with his girlfriend has advanced since the time he first thought of coming up. So he called me the other day, says, is it okay if Molly comes up? Okay, yeah, it's okay if Molly comes up. And her dog, apparently, so, and his family, three of his family, his parents, and I think it's a brother or sister are coming up for three weeks also because he was going to be here. So they'll be tourists, and I'm sure they'll be here right at the prime time of tourist season, right in the Red Salmon, last part of July, early August. So that's, it's a busy time for everybody.
Very good. Councilmember Sonart, did you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Coghill, thank you for your good report, for your exciting report, actually. I'm just curious, with the remodeling that's going on in the clubhouse, does that extend to the outside, to any outside painting, to a...
Yes, the whole outside is going to be painted.
Less of a Saldana color, maybe?
Oh, yes. It's not going to be the light blue, but also it's not going to be bright red.
I know. I'm not expecting red, but I gave Griffin what for over that blue for years.
Excellent. You should have. Now, that's part of it. It's all now also up to code for commercial buildings. It wasn't. It is now. So that's the plus. There'll be a nice little gas fireplace in there, make it a little cozy in the place where you can have a drink after, or a hot dog or whatever you want to have there, either before or after a round, or not even when you're playing golf. So we have a lot of plans. And it's going really, really fast. And that's really because we got Patera Construction to take on that project. And they've got a big enough crew to get it done on time and are very well-respected, and it's been going smooth because it's taken a lot off of us.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to any item that's on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will, tonight we have no scheduled administrative reports. Under Schedule Public Comment, we'll go to, which is then, oh, sorry. Yes, since nobody else is ready to testify to anything on the consent agenda, bring it back to councilors. Are there objections to you now's consent for approval of agenda and consent agenda? Seeing no opposition, then those are approved. Now we'll move to Schedule Public Comments, which we just added. Under our laydown, we have item C1, 100% Communities in the 907 Navigation App. We have Abby Struffer from South Central Consulting. Abby, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm going to try and do this in 10 minutes. It's a lot of information. My name is Abby. Born and raised here. I am a consultant in the field of prevention, so I oversee some local projects as well as some statewide projects. Do I just press? Oh, no worries. I'll just keep talking. Okay. Okay. So this is 100% Communities, and I'm going to touch on that because what the project I'd like to show today, we have a three-minute video. 907 Navigation really came out of this initiative. 907 Navigation is a statewide app now. It took off from here in our community, so we're really proud of that. But it came from this 100% Communities initiative. Essentially, I think the easiest way to explain this initiative is this is a community organizing model. It's a national model. It actually came out of New Mexico. And it's essentially looking at what, how accessible vital services are in a community. So there is a framework that you can follow within this model to identify kind of what the accessibility rate of 10 vital services is in a community, and then take it beyond that and build action teams around those 10 vital services to make improvements and enhancements to, to, I don't think so. Am I doing something wrong, or is this, okay? Nope, that's okay. So I'm just going to talk. So basically, how, oh, there we go. Okay. There. Okay. So I'm going to skip through a lot of this because this is like a 30-minute presentation. I like this quote. I just want to read it really briefly here. If you want to understand someone's health, don't just ask about their symptoms, ask about their zip code, education, and access to resources. That's exactly what 100% Communities is doing. So as I mentioned, this is a model out of New Mexico. Essentially, the research behind this is they looked at what is it going to take for a community to thrive, and they identified these 10 vital services. Five of them being considered survival, that's medical, dental, behavioral health, housing security, food security, and transportation. And then five that are considered more of that thriving, getting a community past surviving, and that's parent supports, childhood education, community schools, youth mentor programs, and job training. So how this works essentially is, I'm going to just scoot forward. So how this model works is you start with an assessment. We started that in 2023. We launched our first community, what I call access assessment. You might be familiar with the term community needs assessment. We looked at what is the accessibility rating of all these 10 vital services, and I'll show you that report. But once we launched that, it kind of took off statewide. Some State of Alaska programs got interested, and specifically, the Alaska Impact Alliance got interested. And so this is a statewide alliance working on child welfare reform. And so they do a lot of work in the prevention space, wrapping services around families and trying to essentially safely reduce the need for OCS intervention. And so when they heard about what we were doing, they came down, met with us, they came to our town hall and some different things, and they wanted to come alongside and partner. And they did in a big way, and I'll show you what that looks like. So they essentially built out a dashboard for us. They also brought a team of individuals with Qualtrics in to help analyze the data and write a report. So our actual community report can be found on their page here. Since we've launched, Juno actually did the same thing, and then Metla Catla as well. So there are three communities that have launched this assessment. Here you can see, this is our report. We had just shy of about 1,000 people complete this locally here. This is the breakdown, and you can see all this online. But these are gas gauges. So this is all 10 vital services. You can see that we are pretty much, our residents ranked every one of these services at 50% or lower accessible, accessibility rate. So ideally, you want a full tank of gas. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of our residents feeling like they can access these really, really vital, basic need services. So from there, the second part of the model is really to then build out action teams. And I think we can safely say that we have eight of the 10 action teams off the ground. So these are individuals that either work in that space, in that vital service area, people with lived experience, all of those. So we have about eight out of 10 of them meeting on a regular basis. And all of those action teams, excuse me, have action team leads. Some of them have two, which is what we would prefer, is a co-lead structure. So, but I think the fruit of this next step, and what I think has been the most impactful, is the bi-monthly action team leads, meetings. So essentially, we're pulling together those action team leads on now a regular basis and having conversations about what's working, what are some changes, what's happening in these other vital service areas, and collaborating in a really fluid way for the first time since I've been involved in the work. And it's really been cool to see. And what's happening is we're breaking down fragmentation. We're not working in silos. We're leveraging resources. We're talking about partnering. There's just so much happening just by bringing these people to the table and talking about how, when someone comes in with housing insecurity, chances are they probably also need childcare assistance. They might need some parenting classes, and they might also be needing food security, right? So we cannot be, you know, tackling these issues independently. So that has been a really great part of it. Now, what we've come up with since launching the action teams is we identified right away, what is our what is our resource guide here on the central Kenai Peninsula? So if someone moves here from out of state, has no, you know, idea, and maybe no family around, how are they getting connected to some of these basic resources? We found out that there are a lot of organizations making their own. So that's a ton of time and a ton of effort for these organizations to create these and keep them up to date, much less people be able to find them. And so the most comprehensive one we found was Change for the Kenai's Community Resource, which is a 37-page PDF document. It's super comprehensive and great, but it's really not the most user-friendly, and to print that is really expensive. So we talked to the Alaska Impact Alliance about this, that we need a technological solution, and they had some funding from the Mental Health Trust and decided to launch an app. And this is what I'm talking about. It went from our community resource guide to a statewide endeavor. And so I do have a video. I don't know if it'll work, it's going to be easier than me talking through this. It's a three-minute video walkthrough of what this app is. And it is launched now on Android and iPhone, and has like 1,500 downloads statewide.
First, you're going to want to download the 907 Navigation App in either the App Store or the Google Play Store. Once you open the app, it will ask if you want to allow notifications. You can allow that or not. And then you'll see this little disclaimer, go ahead and hit continue.
... work with their provider or personally get them added. It's vetted, it needs a website, but it's a really amazing tool for a technological solution. So that's my presentation.
Oh, thank you, Abby. Is there any questions, Ms. Struffer? Councilmember Dalton?
How are we advertising and get the word out about this? Do we have brochures we can have to hand out? I mean, I could see this being a great tool to have at like dispatch center and for law enforcement having their vehicles to hand out to people, and even at local businesses to put up flyers and stuff. It is a really cool presentation, and I'm very glad to see this is here, and I look forward to using it, even for new employees that come into the community, to be able to have this to look at childcare needs and that kind of stuff. So thank you for doing this. It's really exciting to see this moving forward.
Sorry. And so, thank you. And that is, this just launched two days before Project Homeless Connect, kind of on purpose. So that was our first debut of it. So we're just getting out and getting it out there, but we definitely have flyers, we have social media graphic, and then that YouTube, that video is on YouTube, so we can be sharing that widely.
Yeah, if, I might, just real quick, can you maybe email that, or maybe Shelly can email that link for us for council? Thanks.
Any further questions? Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Again, thank you for being here tonight. It was really appreciative to see this and see what's going on, and see that all the resources come together. It was a lacking piece, the puzzle, from a city perspective, and I may have to take this offline later, but how can we, is there anything that we should be doing to get more involved and help get this word out? I mean, is it a resource that has been used for first responders yet, or in, as Councilmember Duffett said, with dispatch and things like that?
Yeah, I think the opportunity is, it's an open playing field right now because we're just getting out and promoting it, really. So I would take your advice, really, on how we could do that best for the city of Kenai, but definitely like employer partnerships, I think, could be interesting, and getting it on websites and different things. I would like, we're hoping to get in with the school board and doing some of that, just presenting as much as we can. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? I just wouldn't know, I did see Chief Ross giving that a little run-through as we were sitting here, so. And I did notice Ms. Gensel here, and I know she's very involved with homeless cancer. So you answered my question, I was going to say, hey, did you guys roll this out? And kind of capture some of that information needed at that time, and it sounds like you did, so, very good.
We actually begged them to get it launched before Project Homeless Connect, because that's the exact, not just that population, but the agencies that serve them need to be aware of this app, so.
Very good. Councilmember Dalton?
One other organization, I don't know if you guys have worked with them, but they should definitely probably be looking at putting this on, and I know Todd's sitting right here, Capehead, Cape Pen Economic Development. This would be a great resource to have them put on their website, because they do a lot of this throughout the community, too.
This week, because I presented last year at that, and I would love to give an update, so, yeah.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Abby. Appreciate you stopping by and giving us a rundown on that. Next up, we have unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or is on the agenda?
There we go. How many of you were at Chamber today? Two, not the rest of you? So the Brown Bear, Bronze Bear project was launched at Chamber today, and it's a very extensive bronze bear sculpture that will be outside the airport. Christine Cunningham and, help me, Mary Bondroun, former airport manager, were the presenters, and they have done a fantastic job with it. I've helped, I've helped a little bit with this great piece that they put together, but you should take a look at it. Where I come into the picture a little bit is, the Art Center is interested in being part of the art end of this, and the fellow who's a sculptor is interested in coming here to do a workshop. So we're going to see how that all meshes, and what will be involved financially and so forth and so on. Obviously, not going to be a bronze workshop at the Kenai Art Center. We're a little short on bronze this week. So we'll see how that all works out. He lives in Utah, has done a whole bunch of typical, I have to say, Western horse kind of sculptures, and so, you know, large animals. And one of the great things about this is that the moose range slash fishing game are going to check the anatomy of what is, what he comes up with, to make sure that the feet are the right size and shape, and blah, 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 all those kinds of important details to those of us who live here. So we'll see how this unfolds. We've got some great financial help right now, and starting out with Three Bears, which is pretty great, they said, how could we refuse, you know? But to help financially with this and others, airline got a great check today at Chamber from a super community supporter, so, you know, it's on its way and looking for more. That's all I have tonight. Oh, by the way, the next big show at the Art Center will be the Student Art Show on April 4th, and those of you who have attended that in the past know that that is a building full from front to back, and whole families. My favorite part of that is watching the siblings be so proud of their family members winning prizes for that. Excuse me, I'm a chronic crier. That's it.
Questions?
Councilmember Dalton?
Just one other quick thing. The same sculpture I found out was, he did the moose at the Refuge Building in Slough.
He knows what he's doing.
It's really cool, so, yeah.
Yeah, and they did unveil, I got the pleasure of unveiling the...
Brian had a starring role today, yes.
Yeah, and it was very good. I hadn't seen it until I unveiled it, and it was very impressive, yes. I mean, it's only this big, guys, but it's not...
Yeah, it would fit here.
It's still heavy. It was still heavy, it was still pretty heavy.
Heavy, but substantial, for sure. Anyway, the neat thing about this project is going to be inside the airport and outside. I mean, there'll be stuff on the windows, and in the dry bed and so forth, and landscaping that's outside, so it's going to be very, very visual welcoming to people coming to this community and beyond. I think that the concept of that is great. We'll see how that all works out and what we want to change once it gets going. Comments?
Thank you, Mary Ann. Let's see, Sam is up next, under unscheduled public comments.
Hello, everybody. Samantha Springer, Executive Director of Kenai Chamber. Couple things, so a bunch of stuff's going on at the Cultural Center, as Danielle has just continued to have the changing exhibits every month. We are still working on the museum accreditation, as well as she has applied for several grants to, one, increase her hours, because she's only, I think, 24 hours right now, trying to get her to full-time, as well as a grant to fix Moose Meet John Cabin's roof. We got a couple bids, they were all about $15,000 for the roof, so we are working on that to try and have that open by the summer, so that we'll have it set up so people can walk through it just like they do at the cabins down the road. And so tomorrow, we're having one of the Kenai Chronicles beyond the exhibit. Dr. Jeff Myers is going to come speak. His topic is Seawards Folly, the History of Alaska Purchase, at noon, and we always livestream it as well as put it on YouTube afterward, if anyone is interested in that. And then on Friday, we have a book signing, Vanishing Past Historic Cabins of the Kenai Peninsula, from 12 to 3:00. So lots of history stuff going on, which is pretty cool. And then we got a new logo, so I don't know if you guys noticed that, but we changed our logo finally, and I'm pretty excited about it. It's on the, it's almost on the website, having just a touch of issues with websites lately, but that's okay. But it's on our Facebook, so, if you haven't seen it. In less than great news, if you haven't already heard, Brittany Carr, our, sorry, Marketing and Programs Coordinator, was diagnosed with breast cancer. So it does look like it has spread, and she is heading to Seattle on Tuesday. So any support that we can give her, we're trying. We set up a GoFundMe, excuse me, and we're just doing everything we can for her. Liam's filling in, and other people are helping in the community, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
Let her know we're thinking about her. This is the general public that'd like to speak to the council this time on any item that is on the agenda, or not on the agenda or consent agenda. Seeing none, that brings us to item E1, or Public Hearings, Ordinance Number 3456-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant Received Through Best Friends Animal Society to the Kenai Animal Shelter for Tenants at the Best Friends National Conference. Pleasure, Council. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3456-2025.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to, Ordinance Number Seeing nobody online or in chambers, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotte?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance Number 3456-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E2, Ordinance Number 3457-2025, Accepting and Appropriating Donations Designated by Tom Anderson from the Alaska Community Foundation for the Construction of Sawpall Dugouts and the Dedication of a Dugout in Memoriam of Hannah Hill. Pleasure, Council. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3457-2025.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to, Ordinance Number Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Vice Mayor, next then.
Yeah, if we could get a kind of rundown on what the project is, and it looks like it's supposed to happen this spring?
Yeah, through the accuracy manager, Chief Ross?
Yeah, through the mayor, I would defer to Tyler if he could tell us about that.
I can defer to Director Frye to just fill in a little bit. He'll have some of the update a little better than me on some of the RFP information.
Thank you. So we did put the project out to bid. Bids came in a little higher than we're expecting, so we're currently looking at some options of completing some of the work in-house, reevaluating and discuss further with Terry when he gets back in the office next week. But we're still, looks like we're probably going to be able to get them built this summer, planning on having them up and ready for the season, depending on some material timelines.
Further comments, deliberation? I guess I could speak for council, and I'd like to just say thank you to Mr. Anderson for the generous donation towards this project. Seeing no other deliberation, clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotte?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance Number 3457-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E3, Ordinance Number 3458-2025, Accepting and Appropriating a Grant Received through the Alaska Teriatric Exchange Network to the Kenai Senior Center for Tenants at the 2025 Legislative Fly-in. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact Ordinance 3458-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to, Ordinance Number Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call her all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Kessina?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotte?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance Number 3458-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. We're now on E4, Ordinance Number 3459-2025. Determining that real property described as Lot 10, Block 1, Etolone, Subdivision Number 3, according to Platte 82-103, city-owned airport land located outside the airport reserve, is not needed for a public purpose and authorizing the sale of the property to LOR... the sale of the property to L O R O C LLC. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3459-2025.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation from council? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I do support this. This property is fully developed and has been in lease, according to our ordinance here, since 1991. And I understand the tenant of the property has been in good standing and it's appropriate they're willing to sell them the property.
Further comments? Yeah, and also just, just way in to say, I do support this and this is, you know, somewhat of a follow-through that we, council endorsed a number of years ago to look at leased properties outside the airport reserve where owners of those leases, we'd be able to have an opportunity to purchase the leasehold, which is just the property, as they continue their business. And there's advantages to that and that is, number one, that these, these properties don't get leased to a certain point and then there's no out for the leasehold, so they end up getting run down and things like that. So I think this is, I don't know how many have been sold that were eligible, there were 13 original, but several have been. And so this is kind of a continuation of something that council started a number of years ago. Further comments?
Just I'm glad to see this is coming forth. I think it's great to see them moving forward to purchase the business. It's a well-established business within the city and I think it's important for them to be able to own the land, not have to lease it anymore. It'll save a little bit of staff time, not having to worry about managing those leases also. So I'm glad to see it's moving forward.
Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Cassena?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3459-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Council, we're on E5, Ordinance Number 3460-2025, Determining that Real Property Described as Lot 11, Block 1, Etolone, Subdivision Number 3, According to Platte 82-103, City-Owned Airport Land Located Outside the Airport Reserve, is not needed for a public purpose and authorizing the sale of the property to L O R O C LLC. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3460-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. This lot is adjacent to the previous lot we just discussed and it is also completely developed and I support it for the same reasons.
Thank you. I'll reference my previous comments as well. Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassena?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3460-2025 is enacted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now on item E6, Ordinance Number 3461-2025, Amending the Official Zoning Map and Land Use Table by Rezoning the Properties at 202 North Forest Drive and 1408 Second Avenue from Suburban Residential to General Commercial Zoning District. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3461-2025.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance 3461-2025? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council? Councilor Dotit?
I'm just glad, I think this is just honestly more of a housekeeping thing. These lots have been used commercially for years and years and years and I think it was just a, kind of fell through the cracks a little bit and I'm glad to see it's kind of moving forward and it is officially going to be general commercial. I think it just kind of cleans up some zoning that needed to be done for years now and I'm glad to see they're moving forward with this.
Further discussion? Vice Mayor Naxted?
I agree with Councilmember Dotit. In the memo, it says 25 years or something, but this is, this was a commercial development as far back as I can remember in the 60s. It was New State Nursery, Bannock owned the property and that was the greenhouse around here. But it's been continuously a commercial operation there. So definitely a support.
Further discussion? I would also note that it was operated under a conditional use permit prior to this and we're not aware of any issues or complaints associated with those conditional use permits. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassena?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3461-2025 is enacted.
Thank you, council. We're on item E7, Resolution Number 2025-19, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Airline Operating Agreement and Terminal Area Lease with Alusian Airways. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-19, requesting anonymous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number Seeing nobody in chambers or online, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-19 is adopted. Brings us to item E8, Resolution Number 2025-20, Authorizing Award of the Airport Engineering Services Team Contract. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-20, requesting anonymous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thanks, Mayor. This is really kind of a big deal as far as engineering services, so I was wondering if we might be able to get a kind of report of the extent of the services and what they provide.
Acting Chief, Acting City Manager, Chief Ross?
And I will defer to the Public Works Director, Lee Frey. He will much, know much more about this.
Mr. Frye?
Thank you. This is basically redoing our engineering services term contract. The consultant we selected for this was HDL Consulting Engineers. It's the same contractor we have right now, so they're just finishing up their five-year term contract. This contract is another three-year term with two options to extend for two additional years. So essentially, they're going to continue doing a lot of the work they are doing out or have been doing out there at the airport, continuing to work on the master plan, working on a runway project, taxiway expansions, essentially a lot of the items that you see in the five-year capital plan. And a lot of it is assisting in coordination with the FAA for grant funding and grant opportunities that they're a big help on and have a lot of experience throughout the state working on.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Any further questions, comments, deliberation? Unabsent consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-20 is adopted. That brings us to item H6, Action Approval Reporting Requirements for Agencies Receiving Grants Through the Legislative Process. Councilman Dotit?
So this was, we talked about this a couple meetings ago, about just having some kind of a outline for different agencies to be able to follow as far as giving us a report each year, to be able to say, hey, this is what we're doing with the money. We still need the money. We're still in existence or those kind of things. And there was a draft email presented, I believe, and it basically lines out what staff had come up with as far as questions for their presentation they'd be required to give for this year and then also for what they would be required if they were looking for seeking funding for the following year. So then there's a list provided here. And then I believe if you looked at the list, one update on that was the, the first one, the Peninsula Oilers, that's not going to be on the list this year. That got moved. That's actually part of their contract with their lease agreement for the, so that's not in this grant to other agencies anymore. So that is just been a housekeeping issue there.
I guess I, just to put this on the floor, would this require a motion to approve?
Because it's action approval, there can be discussion, but if we're going to formalize anything, we'll need a motion and a vote.
Okay, very good. So when we get to that point, I guess we'll reach the circle back. Thank you. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Well, I asked for the, for the laydown of the, our legislative thing. So it really is, is a basis of why we might be doing this and it's in your laydown there. And it includes all those that are discretionary funds that we provide to some various organizations. And it kind of, and they're, they're kind of all different and some of them are pretty self-explanatory, I think, what the money is exactly for. And I am generally in agreement with having some kind of a give and take with these agencies, perhaps, you know, what they're doing. I think this, what we've got here might be a little bit more than what I had anticipated, you know, to ask for an agency and, and not necessarily have them report back, you know, at the end of the year, but, you know, perhaps before our budget time, saying, hey, this is what we want to use the funds for and whatnot. And I'm not, I feel like I'm being critical with it, but I'm really not interested in what their administrative expenses are and whatnot. These are funds that we would provide and whatnot for, for a use. And they would, basically, what I envision this would be, an organization would say, you know, we want the funds and this is generally what we're using it for and I don't need to know what their exact budget is for everything, just that they, they're asking for it and it's up to us to decide whether or not we're going to, to, to fund it. As a matter of fact, they don't even have to do that if somebody here had an interest of funding an organization, you know, just let's say it was an organization that I come up with and if you all agreed, or majority, then we just do it. There would not be an application in that case. And that's how a lot of these, or all of them, have come to fruition. The, the Karts one there, Tim Dillon, a year ago, came to our council here and it was something we funded before and then we ceased doing it. And he talked about what they were doing and how are they going to be growing and all of that and then we, we chose to, to do that. There's a few others in here. I'm just trying to get a grasp of how we would do this, you know, or what we would expect from them. There's two that are, the Chamber of Commerce, for example, and Samantha is always good about coming and giving us a presentation and, you know, the Holiday Fireworks, you know, we can have her report before and report after in a written form like we're asking here, but she's going to come in and talk to us, I think. And also the Fourth of July Celebration, it's kind of the, kind of the same, kind of the same thing. And like Alex pointed out earlier, or Councilmember Dotit, excuse me, the Peninsula Oilers, I think this was kind of misplaced in this, so that's, that's not even, even there. Industry Appreciation Day isn't so much of an organization or a group. It, it just isn't, you know, it goes through, the funds go through local, local 501(c)(3) and it's, it's a group of individuals and it's something that we, we just support, but there's really, we kind of already know what the, the money is going for. Generally, it could be hot dogs. But we don't. But let's see, Bridges, the Pride Bridge, the Homeless, Project Homeless Connect, that's something, since I've been on council, we've gotten an annual report on what they're doing already. And, you know, I'm, I'm just not, rather than go through all of them, which I almost did, I'm not sure that we want all of the organizations to necessarily be responding to us in writing before and after, especially if they're going to come in and talk to us or if it's pretty obvious what it's, it's for. And so it's kind of a long way of saying I, I would, I don't mind, and I think it's a good idea really, maybe, to ask, you know, what they intend to use the funds for and let them respond how they choose and we can make a decision on that. I wouldn't necessarily have all of these questions before and after, so.
Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you. Along with Henry's comments there, Councilman, Vice Mayor?
Henry works too.
I think I also support this in, in general terms. I do think, maybe on the opposite end of the spectrum, we might want to revise what is required for organizations like the Kenai Boys and Girls Club to come and provide a detailed budget, including total product, project revenues and expenses. I suspect the Boys and Girls Club has a pretty big budget and that might take a, a whole meeting to go over. So if, if we could adjust these requirements to still meet the need, I think would be good.
And like I said, this is just what staff had written up as the general ideas of questions and these can be modified, we can add, we can take away, we can simplify. And yeah, the ultimate goal is to have some accountability for these agencies and we can adjust and modify this tonight, right now, and just line out and modify these, simplify it a little bit. I think it is important, I mean, the Chamber could just, you know, they can wrap theirs up and both the celebration and the fireworks could be wrapped into one item as far as what they're asking for. You know, there's ways to make a report so that all entities are on the same level playing field, so it's not just a friend of a friend, five councils ago or 10 councils ago decided that they wanted to get funding and that council decided it was good and it's just been carried on indefinitely without any reporting. So this is just a way to put everybody on the same level playing field. I know Industry Appreciation Day, there is a board of directors that is in charge of putting that on, so, you know, they might want to come to us and say, hey, we've been using 500 bucks a year for these hot dogs, you know, maybe we want $1,000 this year and this is why. Or, you know, it just gives them a chance to present to us and what they want and why they need it. And like I said, we can simplify this down, I'm totally on board with that, but I do think that there is some kind of a reporting process that is needed. Like if this was just a general memo, then we can line out items and make stuff more simple and then later on, next year, if we get this first one down and it was like that's too simplified, we can always add to it next year.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you. Just, just as an idea, and I don't have the words and I'm not going to right now, but I, I think that I would like to see a memo of some sort go to each of these organizations and say, hey, in the, in the past, we've, you know, you know, we funded you, can you, can you tell us what you, you know, what you, what you, what you do with the funds or why, you know, can you tell us about? And then they can respond out back accordingly and they, they're all very different in what they do. Some of them would be, you know, perhaps the Chamber of the Holiday Fireworks, well, you know, city funds it because we want to have fireworks, you know, it's, it's what you do. You know, it could be kind of a general response. I do believe that the, the Boys and Girls Club, from a conversation I had with our city manager some time ago, that that is a specific thing that we're funding because, and I probably shouldn't go, because I really don't know exactly what he's saying now, but it had to do with a fee that we didn't want to have charged to, to the young people because of the escalating costs, so we, that's what we're doing. But I don't think any of us here at the desk know that, but Terry was here when that happened. So what I'm saying is, some of it is, is money is that, and that might be a special memo to the Boys and Girls Club, perhaps, if that's the case, is reminding them, this is what these funds are for, and then they can respond back or something. But I think, I think I like the idea of kind of keeping it more general and not necessarily asking several questions the same. They can respond however they want, just keeping it simple.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
We need to come up with some kind of agreement if we're going to do this for this next council. this next council, because I know that's the importance of getting this memo out, is if we want to take a, I don't know if we need to take an ad hoc, to kind of look at this memo and kind of line some items out, and come up with some wording that might have a couple of questions in it, more general, but if we're going to require this for this next budget session, we need to get these out, so they have time to respond here pretty soon. So I don't know if we want to work on that, if we want to try to move forward with a memo more generalized, we can line out some stuff and come up with a more generalized memo for right now, but I think if we're going to require this, we need to start moving forward with something, because the budget session's coming up pretty quick.
I just have a comment. I mean, I guess, on some level, I suppose, you know, I support, you know, having people accountable, once they come in and request funds or get funds, and I like having those funds explained of how they benefit our city residents, but one of the things I see in here that is, is there's really no, you know, dates or timelines or anything like that. I'm wondering if, you know, if that's something that should be an element, that should be included, so that they know, hey, we want to, if you're going to request funds, I mean, if this carries on annually, presumably there'll be an open season, I guess, where people would submit these. And, you know, for us to be able to make decisions on whether we're going to, you know, fund those requests or not, would be, you know, based on the information provided, but, you know, for us to get those at a certain time, so we can review them, there's those, you know, definitive timelines aren't in there, and I'm concerned about that. So, I mean, this is something that we could probably put in policy as well, or make a policy, if that's what we're doing here. I guess I'll defer to Ms. Senna.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So, as the part of the administration, we understand that this is something that the council wants to hear by the budget, putting timelines on it. We know, that's why we wanted this in this packet, is to get direction from the council, what you want to know. It can simply be letting them know they want a letter, you want a letter telling them, telling you how they spent the funds, and if they're requesting fund next year, or it could be more specific, but we know that this needs to get out to them soon, and letting them know that they need to provide this information before we go into our budget hearings, or around the time we go into our budget hearings, which are established by council. And a follow-up meeting, so, basically, we just need to know what you guys want us to tell them, so we can tell them and give them the timeline that meets our other budget timelines.
So I guess, since this is sort of directed at this budget cycle, would there be modifications or adoptions beyond this for the following, you know, years to come?
Certainly, if you guys decide whatever gets put in place this year doesn't work, and want to modify it, you can modify it before the next place.
Councilmember Axton?
Because we're kind of up against time constraints, I like the idea of writing a letter to each one of them, asking for, to return a letter explaining what they, that they wanted again, and what they typically use it for, and then from there, we could expand or change, because I think we're kind of on a timeline right now, aren't we?
Councilmember Casena?
Thank you. One example of maybe how this could work in the short term is the example that was sent by, I think, the clerk's office, from Ben Meyer at the Kenai Watershed Forum, in response to the question last meeting. We had asked for him to come and give an example of what they've done, and he sent a pretty quick two-pager that met that, and that might be a simple kind of solution in the meantime to request that. The other question I had, and this may be for acting city manager, is what are the different paths to grant funding? Vice Mayor mentioned that the council could put a proposal together to issue grant funds, but also people can come and request grant funds. What are the other methodologies that grant funds could get issued?
Mr. Ross, would you rather have, say, a tree?
I'll take a shot at that, but then if the clerk has an answer. I don't think there are other grant funds that go out to agencies, other than through the council budget, and just by your guys' discretion. If there are, then maybe the clerk can speak to that.
Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, I mean, one thing I will say is, I think we're kind of using the word grant loosely. I think these are really just donations. A grant usually has requirements that have to be met and followed up, and we don't really do that. These are really just donations. We give them the money, and then we say goodbye. So I think that's just a little clarification I'd like to add. And I will say that what you're asking, I think, is valid. Council members often propose these budget items, or people will come and ask for them, it works both ways, has worked both ways in the past, I should say.
Yeah, I will note that, when I first got on council, a number of years ago, I remember being at a meeting, we had a couple of young people from the high school that were here, they were planning a trip, and, you know, we're just basically letting people know they needed some money, and there was a motion made right then to donate whatever the amount it was, and that was a little concerning to me because of our public notice requirements, you know, that just seemed on the fly, so, you know, having, you know, obviously, some leeway and time to process is certainly important, so. Mr. Bloom?
Sorry, I would like to clarify, I mean, it's not a part of this program that I think we're talking about, but the city does have grants, like the storefront improvement program, where that's a real grant, but I don't think what we're talking about right here, I think they're more just donations.
And that's where this, sorry, if I can, the, this is just to give us, you know, when an organization comes before us, says, you know, like we had the hockey organization not too long ago, asking for funding, or other sources of funding, having something in writing that says, okay, if you want to pursue that, then answer, here's some questions we'd like to know, and then we'll consider it at our next budget cycle. But yes, having a public notice, I agree, is important, because I don't, we couldn't make a decision that night on that, but we have, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if we had any other follow-up from them, but it just was an example, and that's where it kind of brought up, is like, what is the process? How would somebody go about it? What are we doing with the ones we have now? Because, like I said, there's, the Boys and Girls Club, that's a prime example, I think maybe that's a presentation we need to have from staff at the budget cycle, is what was the intent for these, and are they still using it for that intent? Or, this also would give away, if we do send just a generic email or something to, or a letter to all these organizations that we already give money to, this is also, would be a way for them to ask for more, or adjust their funding, or say, hey, we've been using in this much money for this year, and this is what we're using it for, we could really use this much for next year, and then we could consider that. So it opens up both doors for us to continue the same funding, and it might open up a conversation where they might be able to adjust funding. So I think it's important to have something on writing that gives them a black and white steps on how to do it.
Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So as I look at Councilmember Douthat's memo, he has three line items for agencies that have received the grant or the donation, let's see, I'm going to use both terms here. I like the third one. The third one is simple. If it were to come before us, then I understand what they have done with it. I personally don't need to know their administrative expenses, or, and I think how it benefits the city residents is going to be evident in number three, by what they tell us. And then for agencies that are requesting donations or grants, again, I like number three, because it's very simple, it fits our purpose, the expected outcome or achievements of the project or funding purpose. I think it's important for any agency who is going to be receiving grant/donation money in the next budget cycle, to have, to present something to us, whether it's in person, or whether it's through an email, or whether it's through a letter. I'm not that picky, but I want something, because when I look at the list, I mean, I see the July 4th celebration, I know what that is. I go to the fireworks, I know what that is. But like, yes, I do support Kenai Boys and Girls Club, but I have absolutely no idea what they did, how they used that $10,000. I have no idea on some of these, and it would be interesting to find out, okay, what did they actually use it for? And if they're asking again, and I think they should be asking again, because to use Scott Bloom's term of a donation, it's like you give it to them, they're done, they're out the door, well, that shouldn't just be an automatic rollover, even if it is a donation. There needs to be something that, where they come back and say, you know, hello, thank you for our donation last year, we are here to ask for a similar donation this year, because we want to do X, Y, and Z. And just something, I like the idea, I like the idea of accountability, but simple is really good, even if it was just that third point off of the, the third point off of his first section, for those that have already received, and the third point off of the second section, for those that will receive. Just something simple.
Councilmember Douthat?
I'm totally okay with that, and that, we can make that motion, we could line, there's, and I totally agree that some of these were detailed, and I, but we put several options out there, so it can be adjusted, right? If this year, if we just want to line out the first two on both of them, keep the memo as is, but just do the third one on both of those, they're kind of pretty broad, that gives us a baseline, right? It gives us a starting point, it's a general idea. And then we get these this year, we do our cycle, it comes through, and next year, we'd like a little bit more information on X, Y, or Z, we can always add another line item, but it gives us a baseline, and I think it's important to start with a baseline, and I'm totally on, okay with simplifying it, I think simple's great, and we can always add from there if we want to get some more specifics, and then, and there's nothing saying that, as far as I know, that we can't ask, if we get an organization that sends us an email with the very basic response, we can't ask them a follow-up question that might be more specific if we didn't get our answers we needed there. I think that's totally legitimate, too, so.
Councilmember Dana?
You did see that. All right. No, I just, I agree with this, and I appreciate Councilmember Sonar's comments, that brought something up I think would be important to include. So all these things, we just automatically renew every year unless we change our minds. I think the simple is good, but the only other thing I'd like to see is make it so it's, every year, it's a one-time thing, unless they re-up and re-ask by default. And I think that's important to include, so we don't keep renewing indefinitely unless we don't know what it is, you know, because some of those, I think that's an important piece of the puzzle. I mean, some of these are very straightforward, some of them are maybe less straightforward, but just across the board, make it various, it's a one-time thing, if you need it again, request it again, and go from there. I do think that's an important piece of it.
Further comments? I was just, I just happened to glance out at Sam in the audience, because I see her, you know, she's the chamber, we partner with them on several of these, but I think, you know, she's here often to let us know what's going on, I, you know, those sort of things, I think, you know, I don't, if the chamber doesn't come up and misses a deadline, are we not going to fund their fireworks? So I don't just need to sort of consider some of that, but, Councilmember Dana?
To follow up with that, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, there'd be some grace in there, of course, it's not just hard no, I just, but I do want to have like a time period and a deadline, because if you don't have deadlines, then nothing happens. But no, we do appreciate Sam and everything she does as a chamber, and I don't want to give you a whole bunch of my work, Sam.
Councilmember Axton?
Do we need a motion to put together?
That would be fine if we're at that stage.
Okay, do you want to do that?
Sorry, yeah, if we're at that stage, and I think, I think we're sort of dialed in on a kind of distilled version of this, so, if anybody cares.
I think Councilmember Sonar can line out some items, and we can go for approval there if we like.
Councilmember Sonar?
Do we want to take an ad hoc, so if she's not on the spot?
Yeah, it's probably a good time for a five-minute ad hoc.
Yep.
Back on the record, Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to direct the administration to send letters to agencies receiving funding through the legislative budget to submit a summary statement on, number one, any measurable outcomes or achievements made possible with the previous year's funding, and, number two, if requesting funding for the next year, the expected outcome or achievements from the requested funding.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Vice Mayor, next.
Yeah, just for a little clarification. This is for agencies, and I think I heard there was some discussion earlier, we were discussing earlier, that if a high school group came in, so if it was the band quartet because they want to go to Anchorage and they want some money, they're not an agency, even though it's probably going through the, through the school, right? So is, we have miscellaneous grants unidentified and all of that, so I suppose if we get through this, you know, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what groups we're talking about. Because we've given bicycle caps to the elementary school and done some various other things, but I don't expect any reports from them, other than some kids coming here and asking. What's our?
Yes. Councilmember Dalton.
I would think this would go to anybody asking. We're asking for a one, couple sentences on paper of what you're asking and going to use it for. So I don't know why anybody, whether they're a couple of kids from band camp wanting to go to band camp, we write that in an email and say, this is what we're going to use it for. It's going to pay for our plane tickets. You know, I mean, I don't know what the difference would be to agencies or anybody. I think if we're going to give money to somebody, we should have it in writing on what they're going to use it for, explanation, and/or what they're used it for. I don't, I don't know why we would limit it, but that's my opinion.
Councilmember Sonar.
Do we need to add in, this is a question for our clerk, do we need to add in after the word "agencies" and/or persons? Or entities?
That is up to the council, if you guys want to amend it, to say that.
Vice Mayor, next. Would you like to?
Mr., hang on.
I was just going to say, I think administration knows your intent. We're going to send it to all these grant, everybody that's received these grants that's on this list, whether, I mean, whether they're individuals, corporations, nonprofit corporations. I mean, I think we're clear on what your intent is.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Would you announce consent?
Requesting to announce consent.
Thank you. Is there any objection to the unanimous consent? Seeing none, the motion is approved. That brings us to item H.7, Discussion Scheduling Council Employee Evaluations. What we'll do is, we're going to, you guys will be getting a letter out, or a form out that will rate our employees. I think everybody's been through that process, except Mr. Cassena. And I will, I will, it's a pretty simple process where the HR, Stephanie Randall, will be sending out a pack for each one of our employees, the city manager, city clerk, city attorney. And you'll have, there's categories in there. If you've ever done employee evaluations, it's, shouldn't have a problem, but it's a rating of each individual of certain categories. You can go ahead and fill those in. There's a place for comments. And then send them back to Ms. Randall, and then we'll collate that for scoring, and then we'll get with the council to go over that and talk about the employee evaluation. And we will, at the next, not at that meeting, but the next meeting, we'll meet with the employees is how we finally, this has been a process through a number of years since I've been on council to get where we are now, but I think it works pretty well. So what we need to do is, we would need to schedule two meetings, right? The one where we go with the evaluations, and then usually the next meeting where we bring in the employees.
That's how we've done it the last couple of years.
Yeah. So if you guys can pull out your.
Mayor, don't we, sorry, don't we usually, we go over through the evaluations, and we discuss them, and then you, you know, you come back. And then when we actually meet with the employees, it seems like one evening it's the clerk and the attorney.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're broke up.
That, you know, or am I getting ahead of things?
No, they're actually, each, there's two meetings that, the one meeting that will go in and will distill the information down to the actual employee evaluation. And then the next meeting, we'll meet, which is actually usually two days, because we usually run the city attorney and city clerk, one meeting, and the city manager in another meeting. And those can be, you know, have we done those prior to council meeting? Or no, no, we haven't done them during council.
We've, so at one point, we had special meetings for the evaluation, but most of the time, they've been executive sessions in the last couple of years at the end of the meeting.
At the end of our meeting, yes. Which worked out well, yeah.
Yes.
So if we, we could actually schedule an executive session, thank you for the reminder. This process has been so changed so many times, it's almost kind of confusing now. But we could actually schedule an executive session on the second for that meeting. Is that right, for the?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So if that would, sorry, let me put my thoughts. So that would mean that the documents from HR would need to go out by the end of this week so that they could be compiled and got brought back together for you guys to go over at the April 2nd meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to ask everybody. I'll talk to Ms. Randall tomorrow and have her send those out right away, and then I would ask that we probably get them. She can usually put them together pretty quick. So if we could get those back by the 31st, which would be the end of the month, that should give her, well, I'll actually have her do the deadline when she sends out the pack, and how does that sound? But if you would, when you get it, just take the time to do it. It goes actually pretty quick, the way we do it now. So if we did that, then on April 7th, we would actually have the meeting where we would compile the, and finalize the evaluations. And then we would have, I guess would be this, the second, which would be an executive session on our regular meeting on the second.
Would immediately follow our meeting?
Yes, in a normal executive session on the agenda. And then on the 16th, we could have two of the employees after the meeting, and then on the 17th, or the next day, do the city manager, the way we normally do it. Does that work for everybody nodding ahead? The Sonar?
I'm fine with the second and 16th. I cannot do the 17th.
Okay.
No, it's district solos and ensembles.
How about the 15th? Okay.
Yeah, and Mayor Gabriel, maybe I could go on the 15th. I'm going to be, I have a soccer tournament in Phoenix. I'm taking the local girls team to on the 16th.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, next.
The 15th at 5:00?
5:00 or 6:00?
It's a workday.
5:00? I should be good with that 5:00 on the 15th. We'll do Mr. Bloom there, and then on the 16th, we'll do, I guess we could do Mr. Eubank and Ms. Sander on the 16th, executive session.
So just to make sure we're on the same page, the second, we're doing an executive session?
Yes.
And then on the 15th, we'll do an evaluation, and on the 16th, we'll do an evaluation afterwards, and an executive session?
Yes.
And we'd also have on the 16th, the P&amp;Z joint session, too?
Yes.
Okay. Making sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah, that's a long day. And the reason we kind of do it in this April timeframe is we got a budget. We try to get this ahead of the budget as well. Councilmember Dalton.
Did we, did we set a date for that budget Saturday work session yet?
I don't think that that has been set yet. I believe that we'll be doing that on our next agenda.
Curious.
All right. Everybody good with that? Seeing a nod.
Would anyone be opposed to 6:00 PM on that Tuesday?
No. 6:00 PM? Okay. Go ahead and get that on the calendar. Next up, we have item H.8, Discussion Item, Canadian Municipal Code, Section 2, Alcoholic Beverage and Marijuana License Renewals. Ms. Clerk, or Ms. Sander, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. To the mayor, so first I'll give you an overview of what happens when we get a license, and there are liquor licenses or marijuana licenses from AMCO, is it's routed through our building official, fire, marshal, finance department, legal department, planning department, and police, to see if the city has any grounds to object. This is what's permitted in state statute. They give us 60 days from notice to protest the license. Council has the authority to include additional regulations, but pretty much what our code does right now is mirrors the process that AMCO allows local municipalities with slight variations. If council is supportive, I would like to modify our current code, set renewals that have no changes at all in them, will go through the same review process, but we can authorize the letter of no press, no protest administratively without bringing it to council. This would be a license that existed and has absolutely no changes, it's just the renewal process. And then any new license, renewals of license that are subject to protest, transfer of location, or transfer of ownership, would still come to the council in the same form they do. And then also update our code to more closely match what the Alaska statutes and administrative code designate the responsibilities of local municipalities regarding these licenses.
So this, I guess they ask here, is this would just be approved administratively?
The only thing that would be approved administratively is license renewals that are already in place, and they're not proposing any changes. Like, we recently had a renewal, they were adding endorsements to it. We would bring that to you because they're changing some of the functions, but if it's just a renewal and no change to how the license is operating, we would go through the entire process that we do, but approve it administratively.
Correct. So it is the majority of them, no change?
Yes. Most of them are.
Okay.
Just for clarification on that, if one of our departments had an issue with it, then we would be put back to council then?
Absolutely. State law requires protests be done by the local governing body, so that would have to come to you to issue a protest, or even a non-objection with conditions. So you could say, you know, we don't object as long as they meet these following requirements by a certain date or by another standard, and those would all have to come through council.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion on this, Councilmember Daniel.
Just a quick question. So as these come in, I mean, we see them all the time, but if a member of the public had an issue, how would they know they're getting renewed? Would it just be all done administratively? Is there a way they'd still know?
We would generally still know, because these people would have complained to the police department about issues involved going on. Or if there's a problem with a local liquor license or marijuana store, we hear about it if it's in the city, and that's when we would bring it to you guys, because we already know that there's grounds to protest.
Further discussion? Vice Mayor, next.
I'm going to ask a question, because I, I agree with this and all that. It's just, I was, I'm trying to decide if there's some value in knowing that they were administratively approved, that that was somewhere, and it was, it might be in your report or something like that with some other things. I'm one of those guys that reads the legal end of the paper and all of that, and it just, it's just good information, but not necessary.
So another option, so marijuana licenses renew every year. They're annual renewals. They don't have two-year licenses, and they renew in August of each year. And in June, the clerk's report can give you a report of upcoming licenses for renewal. And then if you guys have heard something, that's another way to flag it. And then alcohol licenses renew every two years, and they renew in January. So we could, in November, put a report out to council in the clerk's report of liquor licenses that are up for renewal or continuation, because liquor licenses in the second year of their license, if there's grounds to protest, we can protest by January 31st of the second year of a license. So we can do a report of the continuation and renewals of licenses twice a year for marijuana in the fall and alcohol.
And that's not a lot of extra work for you?
No, all that information's on the state website. It's just a download of their spreadsheet.
Councilmember Oroska.
Do you typically do, put those, the renewals for the alcohol licenses in the consent agenda?
We do.
Okay. So would it be a problem to just do the marijuana ones and be done with it?
I don't understand the question.
When you do the renewal, like if you do a renewal for the administratively on the marijuana licenses, you could just put it in the consent agenda also, or not?
We do that as well. The marijuana license for renewals also go in there. We just don't have as many of those as there are, like liquor licenses, so you don't see them as often.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I would actually like to at least get a, along the lines of what Vice Mayor was requesting, as a, you know, some sort of major administrative, you know, administratively done, that's, you know, in their packet, you know, so we have an idea of what, you know, who's renewing and all that. Because there could be a possibility, that just runs through my mind, that someone complains to a council member, and maybe not necessarily the police department, or, you know, if it's an issue they have. And I guess you're looking for direction here, is that?
I'm looking for general support for some amendments to our liquor license code, which will come back, probably not at the next meeting, but in the form of an ordinance for your guys' final approval or amendments.
Councilmember Dalton.
I generally support this, is what you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm nodding.
Okay.
All the others.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have item H.9, which was added through our laydown. And if you'll look at that real quickly, I just wanted to, this was at my request, because I did, I did get a request to add this, get a letter of support for this project. And it was probably over a year ago, I was invited to the Borough Mayor's Office to be engaged in a presentation by ORPC, which gave us an overview of this project. And what it is, is they're, they're a tidal energy company, and what they're, what they're working on is a project that would, could capture tidal energy, tidal energy off the East Fourlands, just north of the East Fourlands. They've done a survey of the area, and that's the preferred location to do this sort of underwater. There's actually two types of turbines. One is kind of a horizontal, and one is like a windmill underwater. But what they would do is they would, this water's deep enough, and they've done outreach to the mariners, all the, you know, transit companies that go through there to make sure in the drift, the commercial drift fleet and the sediment fleet, commercial fisheries that would make sure this was an area that wouldn't conflict with those uses, and be deep enough water where it wouldn't have a problem with ice floes or anything like that. But the general idea is that this is pretty new technology, and right now, they're competing with another project in Puget Sound. And apparently, what would happen is that if they were picked to, this project was picked... This project was picked out of the two, they would receive another $30 million for additional design and working towards installation and testing of turbines to capture this tidal energy. That... Another reason that location's preferable is it's pretty close to the Bernice Lake substation for HEA. So there's a pretty easy tie in there as well. They do have a generation underwater, it's in river, generation that has been going on the last couple of years in Iggyogic, which is just at the mouth of the Quejack River over in Leomn, and that's been functioning for about, I think, two years, they said. And that was kind of a neat project, you know, where they had a little drone there. You can see this array, I think there was two, maybe one or two, but anyway, they're submerged, you know, vessels, turbines. And then what they do when they want to raise them to do any sort of maintenance on them, they just pump the water on the platoons, and then they come up, they service them and fill them, and they go back down. And I wish I had the numbers, but they didn't. I think at one time, they said they were able to generate enough power to, you know, to provide 100% of the needs of the village for X amount of time. So those are pretty, you know, interesting, you know, results that they've got out of that so far. But if you, if Henry was at the chamber today, and Mayor McCrakey was there giving a presentation on sort of the, you know, this railroad track we're on right now with Kukuland Basin Energy and the needs we're gonna have and how that, the supply is falling, and in the next couple of years, gonna be having to, you know, make some decisions. Well, they have a number of projects that were listed there that would help offset that additional gas needs, natural gas needs. And although it's not enough, it's something. I'm more interested in just the concept of, hey, will this work, and then expanding it out from there. So that's the reason for the letter, that they're approaching their deadline. I'm not really sure why they're late. Reach out to me. Like I said, I was there about a year ago, but I do support this, and I presume we all do, to look at alternative energy sources for the Kukuland Basin. And with that, I'll take questions. Vice Mayor Nixon.
Thanks, Mayor. Definitely, definitely it's a great idea if we can get more energy and then reduce the fossil fuels that we're burning to do that, so we can use that to heat our homes. But I guess the question I have that you may, it's probably gonna be vetted out by others anyway, but if you know, I was wondering if these turbines are fish, seal, beluga-friendly, and do you have any idea how that works?
Yes, and without... Those questions were asked, especially migrating salmon. And from what I understand, yes, they are. These are the ones, these turbines of which they'll have a similar version of that, that's in the Quejack River right now. Obviously, there's a huge salmon runs that goes through there, and they haven't really had any problem with it. I can't remember exactly, no issues, but there was something different with the outmigrating small versus the returning salmon. I can't remember, but no issues. I think they just reacted differently to when they encountered it. But yeah, there would be a vetting process as well. So I guess what I'm just looking for is council support to, for me to send this letter. Councilor Dalton.
I support this wholeheartedly. I know they've been talking about it for years and possibility of, I've seen a presentation where they saw they might be able to use, utilize some of the older mothball platforms to mount these things, too. And there's lots of different ideas out there, and I think that they've been doing in other countries that have large tidal energy resources, and I think it's important for us to pursue this. I think we have a great opportunity for it, and I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you. Councilor Askin.
Do you need a motion?
Um, yeah, a motion would be good.
I move that we authorize Mayor Gabriel to submit this letter to the U.S. Department of Energy.
Wait a second.
Discussion on the motion.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested, there's an objection. Seeing none, the motion is approved, and we'll get that sent out. With that, we'll go to commission reports, council on aging.
Thank you, Mayor. It kind of slowly got to me here. Council on Aging met on the March 13th. They had a work session, had to discuss their 2025 work plan and senior survey content, the content of the survey. They met for about two and a half hours, over two hours. And they... I want to say that the group, the commission, really works really well together. It was very... Everybody had good ideas, and they meshed them together, and they came up with the plan. And then they had the regular meeting right after that where they moved to approve their work plan, and that'll be forwarded to council. And they did have a meeting scheduled for April 10th, but that has currently been canceled, although it's a possibility they may... I heard after they canceled it and the meeting was leaving that there might be a reason they have to meet, which is, you know, so either they're gonna have a meeting on the 10th or they're not. That's all I got.
Very good, thank you. Airport Commission.
All right, Airport Commission met on the 13th, and had a lot of discussion that night. I learned something new, that we have a small campground area for, by the float plane basin for pilots to use. I did not realize we had that. That's kind of cool. So we talked about that and access and for, you know, wheeled aircraft and how their people can take advantage of it right now. Very small, and, you know, just a couple picnic tables, and talked about how to improve communication of like, what you can do in the community. So that was pretty neat. Also had a lot of discussion and recommendations for authorizing. An agreement with the Greatland Consulting, which was, I believe, in our packet, and then also with Lucian Airways, an agreement for them to use the terminal, which also is in our packet. Learned that they're starting as a seasonal operation with the potential to expand in the fall with two round trips, two round trip flights a day, one in the morning, one in the evening. And also was in our packet tonight, recommendations to approve River Rock Outdoors Fuel Tank and the commercial operations there. So it was a good meeting overall. And the next meeting is the 10th of April.
Thank you. Harbor Commission.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission.
I also was on that meeting, and they were not able to meet due to a lack of quorum. And so the next meeting's on the 3rd.
Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission.
I was at that meeting last Wednesday night, and all my notes are on a different device, so I will be very happy to give a detailed report next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Beautification Commission.
No meeting. Next meeting is April 8th.
Okay. Under report of the mayor, just got a real quick report. I was at the chamber today, got to do this, I mentioned, got to unveil the bronze bear display, and I guess, will that be staying over there, just real quick? Just as the... Oh, Sam, I was just curious if, will that be displayed at the...
[inaudible].
Okay, very good. So if you're interested to see sort of preview what that might look like, that display is over there right now. And then the other thing I want to do is just mention to everybody that I look forward to the pie auction here in a couple of weeks, and really good event, I'll be in town for this, luckily, so I'm forward. I don't know who... It's a Gilligan Island. For some council members that don't know who that is, you could probably go to Netflix, Councilmember Daniel, and maybe pull that up and get an idea of the characters involved. So with that, I'll go to administrative reports, Acting City Manager, Chief Ross.
Thank you. I do have a few items for you, some staff updates. Eric Lervig started last week as an equipment operator at the Streets Department. Casey Leaker, a fire engineer who's worked at the Fire Department for almost 15 years, is leaving the city. He got a position as a flight medic, so that position is being advertised internally now in the Fire Department, his engineer spot. There's a recruitment underway for a lead utility operator, and still for the police, summer hires, and for now, Parks and Rec, summer hires are on the streets. So if you guys know anybody interested in those positions. Parks and Rec worked with HR this year to allow a recruitment for 17-year-olds as well. It used to be limited to 18-year-olds, so they're hoping to get some additional applications through that change. As you may have seen this last week, the city issued a press release in regards to the volcano activity of Mount Spur. The fire chief's been following that closely and meeting with some local, state, and federal agencies and just collaborating on that. We did meet internally and discuss our own preparation to ensure we had supplies on hand for the air intakes for the buildings and PPE masks and stuff for folks. So we have reviewed that, reviewed our plans, and hopefully, we don't get a bunch of ash Mayor Gabriel and City Manager Eubank will present the state of the city at the Kenai Chamber Luncheon on April 2nd. And the draft budget will be submitted to council the second week of April, and Terry will be back next Monday, thankfully. That's all I have.
Any questions of Chief Ross? Seeing none, we'll go to our City Attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I don't have anything to report today, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, City Attorney? Seeing none, we'll go to City Clerk, Ms. Sander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have nothing to report this evening available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, City Clerk? All right, seeing none, we'll go to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Springer.
I just had one quick suggestion regarding the request for donations slash file follow-up. I think it's a great idea. I already do it, basically, but it might be beneficial to create some kind of online form where people could submit requests and include what kind of organization they are to simplify things, because not everyone can make a city council meeting, or, and obviously, the turnout is not always the best, but that would be something that you guys could review. And then if you move forward with someone's request, then they could come speak to it. But that was just a suggestion I wrote down, that it might be beneficial to have some kind of online portal as we move into, you know, a digital era where a lot of people do that kind of thing. So I'm good at that if you need help with anything, so.
Thank you. Sam, any questions, comments? Thank you, Sam. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to the council at this time? Nobody online or in chambers? That means we'll go to council comments, Councilor Dalton.
I'm just looking forward to the pie auction. I've got my costume pretty much ready, or I should say, my wife has my costume pretty much ready. So should be a fun time. Had a good trip down to Phoenix. It's always glad to get back after the chaotic big city life. It makes you really appreciate this slow mall, slow city that we live in, and makes it much nicer to come back and have quiet and peace and not a million people running around. So anyway, that's about it.
Thank you. Student Representative Tanner.
All right, small report. For connections, homeschool, SAT testing is next week, and for Kenai Central High School, there's a state basketball tournament starting today through this week. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoyed the first Friday festivities this month. It was very fun, and it was a wonderful turnout. I mean, the Fine Arts Center was just packed, and the music was great. And this gentleman, the band takes a break, this gentleman comes up, and Ms. Sonar gives me a big hug, and I'm thinking, who is this nice gentleman hugging me? Former drummer of mine. But when the, you know, the girls I recognize, but the boys after graduation, when they come back 10, 15 years later and just bear hug me, I was like, okay, I should know you, but I don't. Because boys change so much. And just that I'm looking forward to the pie auction, although I'm not bringing a pie, I'm bringing a cake. And I'm working on my costume as we speak.
Councilor Askin.
And I'm doing the opposite. I'm bringing a pie instead of a cake this year. And I'm working on my costume. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Daniel.
Oh, man, I'm gonna be like the buzzkill. I'm gonna miss it this year. I'll be out of town, unfortunately. So I'm hoping Mayor Gabriel will bid on a few pies for me. It'd be pretty awesome, so. And I get some good pictures of all these fun costumes.
You can still wear a costume on vacation and send us a picture, maybe.
[laughing].
Councilmember Casana.
It appears that I'm maybe unaware of pie versus cake auctions and how many costumes I should or shouldn't have and wear to this thing. So I guess...
[inaudible].
It does seem like this is a group of advice givers. Other than that, I just wanted to say, now that the Kenai Rink is closed for the season for hockey, just wanted to thank Director Best and the entire Parks and Rec team. Got a good use out of that rink for the whole season, and a lot of hockey couldn't occur without Kenai. So also, along hockey, because that's my entire life outside of this. Just wanted to congratulate our U10A hockey team for winning states last weekend, so.
Very good, thank you for that. Vice Mayor Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor. If I recall correctly, I think spring starts tonight about 1:00 in the morning, and I think it's spring. And so to celebrate, you know, tomorrow, I, just to reiterate, the Kenai Chronicles at noon at the chamber, I'll be there to celebrate it. And it's always fun. I'll always try to make that if I can, so try to do that. Speaking of trying to make things, too, as I recall, Lee, back here, on the 28th, which is the last Friday of this month, there's a tour of the sewer treatment plant at 1:00 still. And I've got it in my calendar, and I plan to be there, find out, see where it all goes. Been a few years, but, you know, you've done improvements down there, but it's, you know...
I should point out that you're all at different times, so there's not a quorum, so it's not just everybody at that time.
I've been telling everybody one, so they might show up. Okay, I got one last thing I just want to bring up, or kind of a request or a plug. We met with the Kenaits about two months ago, and one of the requests, as we were kind of going around the room, was maybe to have a space at the airport for a display of some sort. And I don't know if they had some ideas of what they wanted, but I was just gonna just make a plug back there to administration, perhaps check with the airport managers, see if there's been some discussion, if there's some place, and maybe reach it back out to the Kenai tribe and to see if they have anything they want to, want to display that's appropriate. While I was thinking about it, we have a display in the back there. It's absolutely empty. And see, and it can be locked, and we have Samantha Springer here, and you guys have stuff that you're bringing from downstairs. Maybe there's something that would be appropriate here, too. Don't know, but there it is, empty shelves. That's all I got.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no executive session or pending, I'm seeing no other...